That your cell phones have been placed on silent. This time I'm going to ask that you rise and let's pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and Super Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proverbs 25:11 tells us, "A word fitly spoken is like apples of gold and pictures of silver." Would you bow with me in prayer, please? God, we do pray that today our words will be chosen and fitly spoken. Help us to, everything that we do here today, bring honor and glory to your name. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, we have no special presentations this afternoon, but I would like to recognize State Senator Todd Gardenhauer. Thank you for being with us here this afternoon, Senator. All right, could I have a motion on the minutes, please? All right, we have a motion on the minutes with a proper second with no objections. Minutes will stand as recorded. Counsel, looking at today's current agenda, we have no ordinances on the final reading. We have two ordinances on first reading. If you would let me know if you have any questions or comments concerning any of the items we have tonight on first reading, first reading ordinance. All right, seeing no lights, we'll move into resolutions. We do have several this afternoon, and I believe, Chief, if I'm correct, item 9F under parks and outdoors, we need to defer that item, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And how long are you asking for a deferral?
For one week, sir.
One week deferral?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, if you will keep that in mind when we come to that item this afternoon when we vote. Item 9F, we need a one-week deferral. Any other questions or comments under resolutions for this evening's agenda? If not, move into next week's proposed agenda. Our items on first reading this week will be final reading next week. We have one item under first reading for next week, under the mayor's office. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we're down to that yet, but 8A, I was wondering if somebody from the administration might be able to come down and give us a brief on that.
That's exactly where you are. Mr. Anderson, you provide us a little information on 8A.
Thank you, Chairman. Somebody is here. Councilman Smith, if we could pull up the two-slide-only, very brief presentation for this, thank you.
And Mr. Anderson, before you start, can we be really specific on how we are eliminating all need for approvals for alcohol sales in District 1?
Yes, you can have a liquor store in every zone now in District 1.
Perfect, thank you.
That was a joke.
And most of this crowd probably wouldn't be in Week 2 here.
All right, so thank you very much for your time today. This will take five minutes or less, for my part at least. Thank you for looking at the major beer code changes we made earlier this year. Beer code also affects the retail sale and on-premise sale of liquor. We have a few things to clean up, to keep compliant with state law, and also to kind of modernize some of the stuff in the code. So the packet of ordinances that you have on your agenda next week creates a new process for the beer hearing officer to hear beer board violations and changes the zone names. We, at Councilwoman Dotley's suggestion, we put the zone names in that could have a shorter distance requirement in the spring, but they're the old zone names, so this is merely replacing them with the new equivalent zone names in the new zoning code. We changed the way we do maximum number of liquor stores in the city, and I'm going to go into more detail on that. We fixed one inconsistency of the distance requirements that did not get fixed with the rest of them in the spring. We clarified a health department requirement and created a new non-alcoholic option requirement. This is the last slide, because you told me you liked this one a few months ago. So currently, hearings are done by the beer board. We wrote in the administrative hearing officer process that does not pass muster with the state statute on the AHO, so we have created a beer hearing officer. That officer will be a licensed attorney in the state of Tennessee. They will conduct the hearings, and then it will be presented to the beer board for approval or not. But the hearing will be conducted as a judicial proceeding, and it will be more professional than a group of nine laypeople can be expected to do in a setting like this. The updated zone names, that pretty much speaks for itself. That is just, you know, changing the new, from the old names to the new. Currently, we fixed the number of liquor stores in the city of Chattanooga, no matter how many people live here, at 54. No one knows how we got to that number, it was decades ago, but I can tell you that the city has drastically increased in population since the number was just set at a 54 number. A technique that other cities in Tennessee use is per number of residents, so that way it can just increase as the population increases. So this will be an increase to no more than one store per 3,000 residents. Currently in the code, it says a health inspection is always required for beer permits, including temporary beer permits. The problem with that is that the Hamilton County Health Department does not do inspections for temporary beer permits, so we're removing that language and changing it to, where required by the county health department, you must have a health inspection before the beer permit. And then the last one is an initiative of this administration to increase public safety and add that if you have a publicly permitted event, meaning you have a temporary beer permit, 10% of the beverages that you stock must be non-alcoholic, not including water. This does not mean 10%, as in 10% of the products, but 10% of the total stock. So if you have, you can have just one non-alcoholic option, but it has to be 10% of your stock. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I'm available for questions after this meeting as well.
Anything follow-up questions?
No, sir, that works for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dotley.
Chris, does this change the distance between these type of establishments and childcare and religious institutions?
Yes and no. It doesn't, from what we changed in the spring. We changed it in three sections. There was a fourth section that's inconsistent that still has the old formula in it. So it really, it was just an orphan section. It's the same numbers we talked about in the spring, but there was just one place where it didn't get changed and others where it did.
Okay, so it's all just consistent at this point?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, that was it.
I see no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right. Still under next week's proposed agendas, moving down to resolutions. Any questions or comments concerning any resolution proposed for next week's agenda? All right, if not, we'll turn our attention to our purchase items for this afternoon. We have eight items total. Any questions or comments concerning any of our proposed purchase items for this afternoon? All right, seeing no questions there. Looking at our future considerations, any questions or comments concerning future considerations? All right, looks like you're an easy crowd today. Is there anything else that needs to come before this council, under discussion of agenda, before I turn it over to Public Safety Committee? All right, at this time, I will turn the chair over to our Public Safety Chairwoman, Councilwoman Dotley.
All right, we call our Public Safety Committee meetings of order. Can I get approval on the minutes? All right, the meetings sustain without objection. So we have a couple of things to do today. We will be looking at a ballot initiative, I believe maybe from the firefighters, since so many of you all are here, and we're from our Public Safety Department. Also, I-24 East shutdown, and then we do have a couple of resolutions, so if we could read those first. We'll do the ballot initiative with Chris and Ellis, and then the last thing we'll tackle is the I-24 East shutdown. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you can read the two resolutions.
Item I, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for and, on behalf of the Chattanooga Police Department, and if awarded, accept a Tennessee Highway Safety Office, THSO, enforcement of Tennessee driving under the influence laws grant, to be used for community traffic safety enforcement and education, which will include overtime, supplies, training, travel, and equipment for a period beginning October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2025, in the amount of $320,000.
Any comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk.
Item E, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to apply for and if awarded, accept FY24 COPS Technology and Equipment Program funds for technology and efficiency upgrades, which will be used to update older equipment, technologies, and interoperable communication, to assist in responding to and preventing crime, appropriated through the FY24 Federal Community Grant Project funding, requested by House Representative Chuck Fleishman, for a period of two years, beginning March 9th, 2024, and ending March 31st, 2026, for an amount not to exceed $850,000.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Now we will have the ballot initiative with Jermaine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I am going to ask that our police chief and fire chief come up to present. So at this time, Chief Chambers and Chief Hyman will be taking us through the ballot initiative.
Can you pull up the presentation, please?
Before we get started, first of all, thanks for listening to us on this initiative. I want to thank our local IFF members, our local 820, and our Black Professional Firefighters here today that are here in support of this residency change. Chief Chambers has a number of officers here too that are definitely interested in what we're asking for here. With that being said, what we're talking about today is the city of Chattanooga. Wrong one. There we go. City of Chattanooga as we know it, city limits of Chattanooga, we know we hire in the city limits of Chattanooga, but particularly in a time right now, we're looking at hiring outside of the city limits of Chattanooga, and that's what we're seeking to do in this change. As we know, a lot of people that live in Georgia and Alabama would like to come and work here, particularly for the police department and the fire department, but the way that the residency rule stands now, they're not able to do that without uprooting their family, moving their house, and getting their kids out of school to come see us. So this is kind of what we're looking at.
Yes, so this next map bit, it shows kind of what we are allowed to do, right? We're allowed to live as far, you know, north and west as, you know, North Memphis, all the way at the edge of the state, you know, six hours away. But what we can't do is live just below the line, five minutes, and as you see where that arrow points, that's actually where I was born. You know, I grew up in Catoosa County, but I spent the majority of my time working, going to church in the city of Chattanooga, ultimately, you know, Chattanooga becoming my community. We all understand that Chattanooga is more than just its city limits. We have been recruiting for a number of years for our region, our entire country, and, you know, it does make it easier for us as a whole to ensure that we're hiring and recruiting the most qualified applicants wherever they're from, and just giving them the opportunity to live outside of this geographic boundary.
Another anecdote to follow up with that, when I got hired, I lived in the city of Red Bank, and by the end of the academy, I was told that I had to live in the city of Chattanooga. So I had to sell a house in Red Bank, move to the city limits of Chattanooga. The state law changed to do the statewide thing, and I lost a lot of money, honestly, and it was difficult to sell a house in the amount of timeframe also while going through a fire academy. But I was passionate about the job and knew that I wanted, was able to make that sacrifice, but not everybody has that luxury. So just another case in point. So why are we talking about it now? As we know, we just talked about it just a few weeks ago when we talked about the age 18 and lowering the age so that we could have a larger applicant pool. This is the next step. This is the next step. Obviously, over time, we have a much shorter pool of individuals to choose from, for police and for fire, so we're looking to remove barriers that hinder that. When Chief Chambers and I got hired, there were lots of applicants that wanted to come to the police and fire department. Those demographics has changed over time, and it's changed across the nation as well. So we're just trying to capitalize on every thing that we can to make sure that we keep those recruitment numbers up so that we don't have shortages. So in 2024, Tennessee changed the law, allowing cities to hire and retain employees from anywhere and not have restrictions. So the home rule right now is what our restriction is, is what we're addressing here today. So to adopt this change, we've got to modify the city charter, and it has to go to vote to be able to do that. And that's kind of our plan, is to have that go to vote in March and let the citizens vote on it, after y'all's approval, of course. So to get on that ballot, we've got to send this change to the Election Commission by December 19th at the latest, and that's why we're trying to get out in front now, educate, and just show our support for changing this.
And just to caveat, I just want to make a statement that we all already know, right? Post-2020, your residency requirements for a lot of the private sector, we can't compete with, because a lot of companies allow you to work from home, and that's not something we'll ever be able to do, right? That wouldn't make sense. But what we can do is meet us halfway, right? Is to release some of these geographic boundaries that, you know, just simply don't measure up to the needs of our community today.
All right, so why I support this change, removing these residency requirements allows to hire a more diverse pool of individual and keep that hiring pool and those hiring pool numbers up high. So your vote in this is critical for us hiring firefighters and police officers and essential workers really throughout the entire city. And I know it's not just our department that it affects, and it's not just the police department it affects, it affects the whole city. So I think there's a large individual, a large number of individuals out there that are looking to work for the city of Chattanooga. We have a lot of good things going, and I know Mayor Kelly has been committed to hiring quality individuals and has proven that since his time in office, and we want to keep that going. So removing these geographic restrictions will allow me to do what we call a lateral academy, or a modified academy, and I think this is where the big cost savings happens. And I know a number of firefighters in Georgia and Alabama that would love to come work for the city of Chattanooga Fire Department, but they don't want to move their family, they don't want to take their kids out of school, and they don't want to sell their house to be able to do it. But if I can hire individuals with experience that have all their certifications, their EMT license, their firefighter one, their firefighter two, and then not have to move, you know, our academy takes six months long anyway. If I can hire those type of individuals, I can put them in seats on a fire truck within six weeks. And to me, that's a dramatic shift from what we've been able to do in the past. The geographical boundary issue has really hindered us from being able to do a lateral academy successfully. We've tried it once. With this restriction in place, we had about 70 to 80-something applicants, we were only able to hire four. So I know that this change will help support that lateral academy and honestly save the city money and us time and resources by putting firefighters in the seats where they belong. And then obviously filling vacancies, we have a lot of retirements coming up from my department and Chief Chambers' department as well, and we're trying to get ahead of a lot of that, because what we don't want to happen is a lot of vacant seats and us not being able to hire individuals, which compromises safety for other citizens.
And one of the things that we wanted to highlight here is that we're not in any way looking to reduce our standards. We will maintain the highest standards as we always have. What we're looking to do is to expand the opportunities for us to be able to recruit without individuals having to arbitrarily uproot their families and move into the state of Tennessee.
So it's time to pull out all the stops. We already do a lot of initiatives throughout the whole city when it comes to recruiting. Damian Vincent and his team do an outstanding job on our side just recruiting, and we want to support those recruiting efforts. Nothing's more frustrating for a recruiter to recruit in a school, and we talked about this with the age 18, to recruit in a school that's not within the city limits of Chattanooga or the state of Tennessee and not be able to hire that individual without them having to move, and that's pretty critical. Some other initiatives that we had going, the double-digit pay increases in 2021, followed by our annual step increases, which we need to continue to support and move forward with that. I know HR overhauled the way that we hire and reduced the amount of time that it takes people to get hired. That used to be a very long, tedious process, and HR's done a really good job of trimming that down to where we can put folks in the place, in the positions that they need much, much quicker. We also have now dedicated recruiters, like I mentioned Damian Vincent and a lot of other firefighters helping do a lot of recruiting. CPD also has their own dedicated staff for that. And then even as we speak, like I mentioned earlier, I know of at least 20 firefighters right now that would come and work for the Chattanooga Fire Department with this change. And those are the gaps that we can really fill quickly when we have these retirements. We just made an offer to 38 individuals for next year's academy, but with all the retirements and thing that I've got coming up, I know I'm going to have more vacancies, and I'm going to have to act quickly to be able to fill those. And a six-month academy can sometimes be a little bit cumbersome. You know, we've already made job offers here in September. They don't start the academy till January because they have to get through all their physical process, so that timeframe takes a long time. And in that timeframe, I'm sitting with vacant seats. So this is just another way that we can help speed that process up.
And then I've reached out to some of my peers, especially that are in border, you know, jurisdictions like we are, where you're bordering multiple states. Our, you know, partners over in Memphis, Memphis PD, would be a similar situation, where they're right there near Arkansas and Mississippi as well. They have, the only restrictions they have is you can live anywhere that you can get to work in two hours. So most of their officers live in Arkansas, Mississippi, in those outerlying areas versus Memphis proper. Same thing, you know, with our county, Hamilton County, they do not have a requirement to live inside the state. They actually went a step further and actually have allowances for taking, driving their take-home cars in or out of state. So there's several others. We could provide a list if you guys are interested, but there is a list of agencies in around us that they don't have these type of restrictions, and it does enable them to be able to hire and retain good quality recruits.
I'll turn this over to Kevin, and we'll take any questions that you have.
So just to recap real quick, as the Chiefs mentioned, this is the timeframe that we're kind of up against right now, which is why we're bringing it to your attention today. And also to recap, I would just like to say that what we're trying to effectively do here is recognize that you have incorporated Chattanooga, and then you have functional Chattanooga, and we want to be able to recruit within functional Chattanooga and expand opportunities to join us, to work at the city, to work as a first responder to folks who live in functional Chattanooga. And so we're talking about it today, and in November, we would ask for you all to consider it, because as the Chiefs mentioned, home rule charter does require this to be put forward for the voters to decide whether or not they would like this change to our charter, but it has to be a proposed amendment that this body passes first, so that would be two readings in November, and then we're just working against the December 19th deadline to get that proposed amendment change over to the county election commission so that the voters can decide on March 4th.
And just for clarity, the proposed amendment change is to delete that portion out of our charter?
Yes, ma'am. So there is, I think it's Section 311, and the amendment, which the attorney's office would help us draft, would basically eliminate that subsection.
Okay, thank you so much. And there are multiple questions, but before we get to questions, would, I see we have a lot of fire and police individuals here, would you all stand, please? We just want to recognize you for being here. Y'all doing what I'm not going to do, but we appreciate you and your service. Thank you all so much. And just to hear it from you all, by a show of hands, how many of you all support this initiative, just by a simple show of hands? Well, all right, I think the decision is made, but we're going to keep going on anyway. Y'all go ahead, have a seat. Thank you all so much, we appreciate it. It's always good to have you all here, good to hear your input and know where you all stand as we begin to make the decisions. So with that, we do have a little board, so we'll go to Chairman Henderson, followed by Councilwoman, I believe, Ledford, and then Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I got you. Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank Senator Todd Gardenhauer for sponsoring the legislation that allows this to be put on the ballot to remove the residency requirement. Thank you, Senator, for sponsoring that. You know, most of the cities in the state of Tennessee have the privilege of having a 360-degree recruiting radius. We being a border city are limited to 180-degree recruiting radius, and I think this is going to help tremendously in getting our academy numbers up and enabling us to hire the best first responders that we can hire from the city of Chattanooga. You know, when you're in a burning building or you're in a wreck, I don't think you're going to take the time to ask where somebody resides. You want to know, have they been trained, are they coming to help you on your worst day? So this is certainly something that I will be supporting and look forward to seeing this on the agenda.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of quick questions. Chief, this Chief, Chambers?
Yes, sir.
When talking to other municipalities that do not have this, was there any negative feedback that they were able to provide or any drawbacks that we should be aware of?
No, sir, not the conversations that I've had with these other, you know, especially the border. It's difficult when you're having conversations on your Knoxville's or your Nashville's when you're dead center of the state. It doesn't have as much meaning, but when you're talking to Memphis and then, you know, where we sit with Hamilton County, we're just really behind the times. These are things, especially with Memphis, that's happened some time ago. It's been their reality for a while now. We're just catching up to that.
And I, thank you, and I agree. Chairman said we are a border city, and he's right, but we're not a border economy, we are not a border community. I represent a district that is adjacent to North Georgia, and I promise you, half of them, I think, come through it every morning. So I don't see why they couldn't come to work, because they're coming here for work for other, and competing in the private sector also is important. Senator Gardenhauer, thank you, spoke to you a minute ago. This was a really good piece of legislation. I appreciate you bringing this to us at the state. Do we have a limit that we're setting, or are we just deleting this from, this might be for the city attorney or Kevin?
So the idea right now would be just to eliminate that provision in the charter.
Sure, and that makes sense as well. Last one is Chief Hyman. We've talked about when we lowered the age to 18, which I think was a tremendous step forward in our recruitment, and if you don't mind, I would love to hear from Captain Vincent, if you don't mind coming down. I'd like to hear from the person who really is on the front lines in recruitment. But Chief, the question to you was vacancies. That 18, lowering it was one step towards solving that problem, but this is another.
Correct, yes. Yes, age 18 was our first step. This is obviously our second step, and just to keep our recruitment numbers up, Damian will attest to it, we've seen evidence that that's coming. We've already hired this academy, but I look forward to the next academy and seeing a couple 18-year-olds trickle in there and give us an opportunity to recruit in areas that we haven't been able to recruit in.
And since we've done that before Captain Vincent comes in, I have heard nothing but good things from folks that I talk to about. They're like, you know what, that was smart, and especially with the caveats that we've put in place, you know, not putting an 18-year-old in the driver's seat. That's, okay, we understand that.
And to reiterate what Chief Chambers said, we're not lowering the standards.
Correct.
And that's one thing that we want to make sure that everybody knows, we're not lowering the standards to get more people and boost numbers, that's not the idea. We hold a pretty high standard in our department, and I know Chief Chambers does as well. We want to maintain that standard and hire the best quality applicants we can.
Correct, thanks. So you are on the front line, sir. We depend on you. How is this going to help you?
Tremendous, tremendous. The 18 is great, but this is even better, because like Chief Hyman was talking earlier, we're talking about two separate academies. So with the 170-plus that I think that will be retiring or could be eligible retiring, that's a lot of experience there that we're losing. But we're gaining that experience because once you cross that borders, these people have already in high school been preparing to be firefighters. So like Catoosa, Walker County, they've been doing this, they're ready for the opportunity, and this is Chattanooga, right? So let's not get it twisted, they want to come work for a big city. They want, they know that the cause that we run is nothing compared to what they're going to do in Georgia and Alabama, knock on wood, right? So this is going to be tremendous, this is going to be tremendous. When we look at our application process, we're going to, it's going to give us more options, right? So the recruitment programs that we have in place now are great, but if we don't get this change, we're really just putting a Band-Aid on a situation that could require surgery. So the sooner that we react to it, I think it'll be better for both departments.
Very good. In 2017, when I was first meeting with firefighters... In 2017, when I was first meeting with firefighters, it was stressed upon me to help you, provide you with the tools you need to be successful, but also to provide the best service in protecting the citizens of Chattanooga. And I hope this is a tool that we can help, and I think this, hope that the citizens of Chattanooga will get behind it as well, to give you the tools to be successful and being the absolute best you can be for us. So, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Ledford. And just a quick follow-up before we get to Councilwoman Burris. Mr. Attorney, in regards to a distance requirement, can you update us on that and additional employees?
Yeah, we attempted to talk with the Attorney General regarding a distance restriction here that would be allowable here for a certain mile radius, and that was said that we should not do that, just have a reduction of the boundary in there. And that is statewide that would be allowed to have something in other states here. And based upon the legislation that's currently been passed statewide, I believe that's acceptable. There were charter provisions in the city charter that have to be changed through the Home Rule method here this one time, and there's no order of the court that would restrict that from occurring.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Burris, and if y'all didn't understand what Phil said, basically, we can't have a distance requirement. I know it's an attorney talk, so I'm going to simplify it for the regular people, like myself. Thank you, Phil.
It takes years to do that, right?
It does. He's good at it. It's like, it's not work for you. Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Chattanooga should be represented in all areas of life by the best and the brightest, and without artificial restrictions. We're very fortunate to have both you Chiefs, you are the best and the brightest, and we ought to let you do your job the best way you can and not have laws that get in your way. So I 100% support everything you're doing here. I, I can't imagine anyone saying, gee, I don't want the best and the brightest, we just have to stick with wherever. That's old ways of thinking, and that's not productive ways of thinking. And I wish you all the best, and I support you 100%.
All right. And, this is Councilwoman, you good?
Huh?
Are you good, Councilwoman?
I am so good.
Councilwoman Koonra.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know, it happened last week too, for some reason. I don't know if that's intentional or what. I really don't have a lot of business. I'm just trying to roll out to March 4th, just, hey. Thank you, Chair. I think it's a great opportunity to, you know, be able to recruit people from across the border, but here's, I do have some concerns about it, especially with our fire department. We have so many of our black firefighters that have retired and are still retiring, and the pool is looking real slim in our fire department, and, you know, the areas that we're saying we're recruiting from, I'm not quite sure if we're able to attract black firefighters or even black police officers to that space. So that's the only concern that I have, is that I want to make sure, or see if we can implement a retention program when we do get people in. You know, the cultural mix-match will be concerning on the police department side if we having those individuals. And I'm not saying that all people in those areas are bad or not, you know, I done been a bad actor before in my life. So, and there's always room for, you know, people to get their lives together, but it is concerning when we think about the climate that we're in, in the state of Tennessee. We have to be honest about that space. So, and I most definitely don't want neither department to lose the focus on local. So what will you have in place to make sure that we're still concentrating to draw recruitment from local candidates, and also share across Tennessee, but making sure that we're getting people connected locally to make them feel like, hey, you're a part of the team, we want you to be a part of it.
I'll let Damian speak to the programs, but the Chattanooga Fire Department, I know the Chattanooga Police Department is committed to hiring demographics that match what lives in Chattanooga. That focus won't change, and that's still a high focus of us. When we look at the numbers of applicants that we have, that is something that we definitely focus on. But Damian can speak a little bit more about what he does in the community.
Yeah. So honestly, nothing changes, because we've been doing the work. We have programs in place, we hit the high schools, we hit the community. We push it more back on the community. If you want to see change, we need those individuals. So it's hard to go, I don't like to go, and I'm saying this in front of Chief, you might fire me tomorrow, I don't like to recruit, right? I want individuals who want to be a part of the Chattanooga Fire Department. So nothing changes from what we do. Surprisingly, a lot of people that we've turned away from across the border have been minorities. Some have, are working in the fire departments, Walker County, Catoosa County. We had some who have come and were willing to uproot themselves and move to Chattanooga, but it's actually going to increase our diversity once we open those borders up.
With black people?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak to some of the recruiting efforts that we've had towards some of our retiring military personnel. We've done six out of seven trips to middle and south Georgia this year, because there's a couple of military bases that have regular career fairs. And it's not free, but that's important to us, and we do get a lot of minority applicants from those interactions. That's from Georgia, their families are in Georgia, their National Guard, they're coming out, or they're active duty, their families are living there, they're ETS-ing, which, you know, they're, you know, they're coming out of the military, they're looking for a career, and that's the individuals we're looking for. It becomes another artificial barrier when those individuals, that, you know, their life is in Georgia, and now they're having to go, well, crap, now I've got to move my whole family and everybody up into Tennessee, where, you know, if you're, they may have bought their house in 2020, 21, you know, 2019, now they're looking at 2024 housing market prices, that becomes a significant barrier to these individuals.
Well, thank you for, you know, explaining. Like I said, I think it's great, it's a good idea, you know, I just had those dear concerns. Unfortunately, we wish this would have been in place when we had Chief Murphy, but now it's after the fact. But I'm sure we will recruit some great people. And I do struggle with using the word a minority, I think we have a lot of minorities in the fire department and police department, I just think that my word of choice is black, and we tend to use the word minority to try to fit in with black, but it means two different things. So, you know, however I can support, you know, I'm always willing to do that, but just wanted to share those few concerns that I do have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Koonra. So with that, I don't see any other lights here, so I think, I think we've asked all the questions. If not, you know, we'll be back to ask more, we need to, but we'll be looking out for that on the agenda. Did you have a date as far as when you want to put that ordinance on?
So if I'm not mistaken, right now we are targeting November 3rd, 4th, 5th?
5th.
5th. Thank you.
November 5th for first read.
All right. Okay. So we, so we'll be looking out for that, and Council, you should have received a paper copy of the ordinance, as it'll be listed, the ordinance as it will read on November 5th, as well as what it will look like on the ballot for our constituents. All right. Thank y'all so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you all for listening.
Thank y'all. All right. Y'all ready to buckle up? Ready for the I-24 e-shut down on October 4th due to an overturned semi-truck? And I'm gonna hit this button and turn it over to Chairman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. So let me just say from the start, I want to make one thing clear, the purpose of this meeting that I asked for here today is not to assign blame, but to find solutions to the gridlock that occurs in the Lookout Valley area every time there's a wreck on the interstate in this, in this area. To sort of tee it up, I've got a couple of slides, Mr. IT, if you could put the first one up, and we'll probably, and I'm sure we'll get a little bit more accurate timeline once the Chief gets up here. That's not it.
It's just one that says Henderson on it.
It's one that starts out, yeah, there we go, Public Safety Committee. That's it. Go ahead to the, yeah, the next slide. So here is the picture of the overturned truck. The timestamp on this particular photograph was at 8:31 a.m. on that Friday morning. Let's go to the next slide, which is a, if you would play the video. This video is taken at 3:20 p.m., later that afternoon, and this is on Brown's Ferry Road, this is headed towards the interstate, so you can see how backed up traffic is. And Chief, I hope this can't be used against me, because video evidence of doing something illegal.
That depends on how this goes.
I can't help it. But you can see how backed up the traffic is. And this church, where the traffic is backed up to, is one mile from the interstate. Okay, let's go to the next slide. This is a screenshot, oh, that's the same one. This is a screenshot of the map, and this was taken at 3:17, and you can see the reds and the yellows kind of in the upper part, which the red should have extended all the way down Browndale, because when I passed there at about 3:30, Browndale was backed up from Brown's Ferry Road all the way to Isble. Isble was backed up all the way to Kelly's Ferry. All of that is residential areas. We had tractor-trailers coming down our residential neighborhoods, and really just had all of these residents in lockdown, couldn't get in or out of their house. The next slide, please. And, and keep in mind, this was like 3:17 that afternoon when the wreck happened that morning. This next slide that I'm going to show, and it doesn't look too terribly bad, but understanding the significance of it, this occurred on Cummings Highway, which was the only route out, this is Cummings Highway, which would, this particular video, can we get it up and So you can see there's no traffic headed towards, in the left-hand lane, headed towards Broad Street. That's, that's where all the traffic would have been coming from, but you can see the trucks going up Old Wall Hachipack. So this is at Cummings Highway and Old Wall Hachipack. The Sanofi truck drivers came down Cummings Highway, had to turn right onto Old Wall Hachipack, and while they did that, there were three of them, workers had to get out into the Cummings Highway and stop traffic for 30 minutes, on the only route that we had out of Lookout Valley. We stopped traffic completely for 30 minutes. So there's a couple of things that I think, Chief, we need to unpack and address this afternoon. And like I said, what I want to come away with this is, is some action plans to, to eliminate or to ease the gridlock that occurs in this, in this community whenever there's, whenever there's a wreck on the interstate in this area. So, Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you and kind of give us a timeline and, and a synopsis of what happened.
Yes, sir. And this, this is a perfect example of why we need this type of discussion, and the future meetings that will be held, because this did pose a significant issue to that community, and it stretched far into Georgia, as well as all the way up towards Mont Eagle. We'll give the quick synopsis, this is the location, the exact location of the crash, as you guys see where it is. It's already past both exits, which is Brown's Ferry and Cummings Highway, which are the only two exits in Tennessee as you're coming eastbound until you get to the other side in the downtown area. This is a more close-in look of it, and what is deceiving here is the grassy area. Please envision what you're not seeing is, there is a concrete barrier on one side where the shoulder is, as well as a raised steel bar median on the other side. So you're contained to two travel lanes and a shoulder. That is the only work area there is. Even though the overhead may appear to be differently, there is no grassy area in which anyone could have actually done any work. These are some pictures of the wreckage, once the trailer was uprighted, it was already broken in half, and the entire contents of that trailer spilled onto the interstate, which required other flatbed trucks, dump trucks, skid steers, a ton of equipment that was required to get up there, and then also offloaded to utilize to, you know, pack these items back onto and transport it out there, so that we could tow the actual vehicle, or so that the tow company could. Some more pictures of what it looked like. So here's the synopsis of what actually occurred. On October 4th, 2024, officers responded to the 177-mile marker, just after 7 a.m. is when the crash occurred. Due to the incident location, as well as the vehicles involved, this ended up being a recovery operation, which requires, by our charter, a Class C wrecker service. Responding officer consulted with the semi-truck driver about a possible contract, that if the wrecker, if the company that owned the semi-truck had a contract, they were not sure. Then, after conversations apparently between the semi-truck driver and his company, they notified Yates Wrecker Service. The officer then checked with dispatch to see which wrecker was actually on rotation. There was some discussion between dispatches, as well as with our regulatory unit as to what would be the most appropriate company to tow, a company that may have had a contract with a semi, or what's on our rotation. While waiting, Yates Wrecker Service already arrived on scene. The driver with Yates first thought that they did have a contract with the company, but later, when the officer spoke with the owner of Doug Yates, or Doug Yates, the owner of Yates Towing, to find out they did not actually have a contract with that particular semi-company, that transport company. The officer then spoke with CPD Regulatory. CPD Regulatory explained that, given the totality of these circumstances, the most appropriate route would be to utilize the Class C rotation. So the next wrecker on that was Mont Eagle, was Mont Eagle Towing, and they were contacted. During that time, Yates was told they had to leave the scene and could not tow, because that would be outside of our, of what is required by us. Mont Eagle responded to the scene, since they were next on the rotation, and then, as they were trying to, you know, they have to detach the cab from the trailer and then upright it, and then doing, you know, when they went to upright it, it broke apart. Wasn't a whole lot that could have been done to prevent that. This is a basic timeline, the, this was gleaned from reviewing the body worn camera and the radio traffic that was captured by the body worn camera, it's all time stamped. So at 7:11 is when the wreck was dispatched, the officer, the officer arrives on scene at about 7:23. T.DOT was also advised around, in between those, those two timeframes. T.DOT arrives on scene at 7:45 and removes the truck out of one of the travel lanes, so that they can, we can then open up one travel lane, and at that time, a travel lane was open, so traffic could continue to flow. It is two lanes, and given the 20-plus minutes that traffic had been shut down with both lanes, traffic had already started to build. The officer then goes through the back and forth of trying to identify which is the most appropriate company to make this type of recovery, whether it was Yates, ended up being Mont Eagle. Mont Eagle responds to the scene. They were called around 8:07, and then Yates arrives on scene at about 8:39, and then is subsequently told to leave. Mont Eagle arrives on scene at around 10:05, and then, I'm sorry, 8:50, Mont Eagle first arrives on scene, then they advise that they are going to need additional equipment to be able to successfully complete the recovery. Mont Eagle did want to try and open up two lanes of travel, as you can see from the pictures that I showed earlier, both T.DOT, as well as the officer on scene, decided that would not be safe, and I completely agree with that. Given everything that was going on up there that day, the amount of equipment that was, that had to be utilized in order to, you know, unload the debris, as well as the rest of the, the contents of the trailer, and then upload it onto another vehicle, that had to happen multiple times. It would have been unsafe to try to do all of that in a six-foot space. And then, 10:13, the officer directs Mont Eagle to go ahead and put out some barricades and cones to try and alleviate a little bit of the traffic congestion, because it was, as you would expect, everyone drives to the last point and then tries to merge over. At that point, from that 10 o'clock timeframe up until 5:12 that evening, it was Mont Eagle trying to, you know, recover that vehicle, as well as the contents of that trailer. Looking at this and going through the timeline, and also recognizing the challenges that exist from the geographic location of Lookout Valley, I feel like an infrastructure review would be an excellent next step. We need to consider a joint planning meeting. My recommendations would be to include, obviously, Chattanooga Police Department, Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Office, C.DOT, T.DOT, as well as Dade County Sheriff's Office. Every one of these entities would be integral in some type of action plan for next time. Traffic management, the disruption here obviously underscored the importance of having a robust traffic plan. Being able to manage the amount of traffic that is inbound from the west side of our county into the city of Chattanooga on a two-lane road with only one other ingress and egress route is something that we need to figure out. We need to figure out a way to alleviate that. And this highlights that actual need. So the two arrows at the top, those are pointing to both Brown's Ferry Road and Cummings Highway. As I already stated, Cummings Highway, even if you get off on Brown's Ferry, Cummings Highway is the only other possible ingress and egress route. is the only other possible ingress and egress route to downtown Chattanooga. So if you're trying to get to the east or if you're trying to get to twenty-seven north, you can't do that unless you go either twenty-four east or Cummings Highway. What we found out was the semi trucks that were being diverted, they were not all from Sanofi. I'll go over that in just a minute. The railroad trussels that exist on the south side, none of them will allow an eighteen wheeler or semi truck to pass under them. So all of the trucks that were, all the semis that were rerouted to Cummings Highway because of the twenty-four crash had no choice but to turn west on Wahatchee Pike, except for the one that did try to go straight at twelve oh five PM. And it was a chicken truck, and he crashed into the railroad underpass. So the reason I mentioned the Dade County is because, as you see, we'd have to dip into Georgia where fifty-nine splits. That would be the only possible route to re way to reroute the bulk of that traffic. But here are the challenges with that. If you reroute fifty-nine south, the first option you have to get over Lookout Mountain is down in Trenton, Georgia. Now, we were going to be sending semi trucks down into Trenton, Georgia to go up and over Lookout Mountain through neighborhoods, all the way back down to hit Highway one ninety-three and then come back up to the Broad Street side or continuing east through back roads and neighborhoods all the way to Chickamauga. And then figure out how to get Chickamauga to twenty-seven, then you can get back up to I seventy-five from from Highway twenty-seven down to Chickamauga. This is the infrastructure issues that I believe that we're faced with figuring out a a better way. It is not outside the realm of possibility that a similar situation could happen this week to where a single crash in a two lane road, especially given the the size and and the number of eighteen wheelers that come through Chattanooga on a regular basis. This is something that we do need to figure out a a best next step to alleviate this type of issue. And it's going to require a lot more than than what we have the capacity to be able to resolve by ourselves. These, this is the location of two other crashes that occurred. The crash at Wahatchee Pike occurred at eight oh five that morning. So within thirty minutes of the crash occurring on twenty-four, trucks had already started to reroute to go Cummings Highway. And that is where the first crash occurred and that continued to bottleneck every, all of the the other traffic coming into Chattanooga on Cummings Highway. And then later on, at twelve forty that afternoon is when the the semi truck with the load of chickens tried, thought that, well, he didn't want to go Wahatchee Pike, so he tried to go under it. And as he learned quickly, you cannot do that, nor can you pass under any of the railroad underpasses on the south side with a with a semi truck. Additional opportunities would be public awareness. I feel like that we are, there's some opportunities for improvement in that area relative to us. You know, once we have a a more robust plan, being able to work with with T dot as well as G dot to be able to get that information where it needs to be much, much sooner than they get into the Hamilton County area. It needs to be prior to even coming into Hamilton County. And then emergency response coordination. I feel like that, once we have that in place and we have a a clear idea of what a better next steps would be, and it could go back as far as South Pittsburgh, because that's the only other option other than Trenton, if you go further back, to get across from the north side of the county, to go that way from South Pittsburgh. Again, that requires a lot more than what we have the the capacity to handle. And then we had a slide. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carmen Harvey, City Transportation Engineer. So we've, we've actually talked a little, we've talked about this, and I added some information to the slides. So some of the ongoing projects that are, that are out there right now and future transportation projects that kind of, that can help alleviate some of this congestion during these kind of incidents. First of all, we were given a five million dollar congressional earmark to Wyand Cummings Highway. So that is currently with RPA and will be added to the tip coming up. And so that would be initially to hire a consultant to com- to complete the feasibility study and to look at a thirty percent NEPA design. And then that scope will include the cost estimates for doing the widening widening and then also to for replacing those two railroad bridges. As you spoke about, one of them is not equipped to be able to, it's not wide enough to have additional lanes of traffic. And the other one is not not equipped for the lanes of traffic that would be needed in an incident like this or the height restrictions for that for the semi trucks. So then also a part of this slide, we have a signal wide signal retime, citywide signal retiming. And that's including doing automated traffic signal performance measures. And so that will be able to integrate into with what the T dot's incident management plan is that they have published on their website, which I have a link in here to that. And part of that incident management plan, they detail like if an accident happens between certain certain mile markers on interstates, they have it detailed for the entire region as a separate map.
Ms. Harvey, can I?
Yes.
Can I stop you just one second? Look, can we go back to the signal retiming and automated traffic signal performance?
Yes.
Is it possible to sync the lights down Cummings Highway from the one seventy-four exit down Broad Street to where they turn to get on the freeway? Is it possible to link all of those traffic lots so that when we turn green, we're going?
Yes, to an extent, yes. So as long as the infrastructure is there for each one of those particular signals. So there might be some upgrades that have to happen as part of that signal retiming project, which would be part of that ATMS set at the ATSPM.
How soon could we make that happen? I think that would create a tremendous amount of ease in getting people in or out. Because sometimes it's backed up going the other way. I mean, it's it, and and the quicker we can get folks running down Cummings Highway back to the interstate, the better off we are as well, rather than having to stop and go and stop and go. Because I think there's like three different lights, you know, from Browns Ferry Road till you get back on to exit one seventy-four. But if we could time and sync all of the lights down Cummings Highway and down Broad Street, I think that would be a tremendous help.
Yeah, so we have, so the project itself is, the consultants just finished up doing the inventory and get and collecting all the traffic data and collection. So they've actually moved into the phase where they're doing a design right now. And so we have some priority corridors that that we've given them a list of to to start doing the timing on, first off.
So how soon do you think we could make something like that happen?
How soon?
How soon?
I could get with our consultants and find out how long it would take them. Because they have to go through and they have to put it into analysis software, and they have to do that that actual design work for that to happen. But they're going to be out there doing work as they're doing that design, implementing things as they go. They're not going to wait till they get to the end of the project in two years and then implement stuff. It's going to be happening in real time.
Okay. Could you get back with me on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So just to, so like I, like I mentioned a second ago, T dot has an incident management plan. And so that's the location where they show all of their incident responses. What you do between certain mile markers, and that's for I twenty-four, it has point of contact information, everything in there. So part of that project for the signal retiming, like I was saying, that'll improve the signal timing across the whole city coordination, and then it'll identify in real time any kind of hardware failure. So if they reroute traffic and then you have some other issues coming up, they'll know that immediately during that process. So there's also a T dot widening project on I twenty-four that's planned. It's just in, it's just now in, it's in preliminary stages and design. And so that's going to be widening I twenty-four from the Georgia state line all the way up to US twenty-seven and twenty-nine and Broad Street exit. So that'll, that should alleviate some of this concern if there is an accident or an incident happens on twenty-four, that you can add an additional, have a lane for maneuverability to to work out there. And so there's a link in the slideshow to that, that we can, I'll provide, that you'll have a copy of. So you can get to that to see directly from T dot's website what their plans are for that project and the timeline. And then there's also, we're also in development to develop a robust intelligent transportation system and hopefully have a TMC that would help with the real time traffic management across the city and in for incidents like this, so that we would be able to see at every signal what's happening and have someone there viewing that twenty-four seven. And being able to, during that time when there's incident, be able to push out the traffic information to the general public and then help with coordination with like other departments, whether it be internal city departments, T dot, G dot, or whoever. And then we would also be able to redirect the motorists during that time more consistently.
So would this help in redirecting traffic? So like in this instance, one of the slides that I showed had all of this traffic rallying through our neighborhoods.
Yes.
How do we keep that from happening?
Well, a lot of times that's coming through ways. They're just redirecting traffic. But this system, like anytime there's, so there's some, there's software out there that we can work with with GIS also. So when there's any kind of closure like that, we can control like what gets pushed out to ways. So we're going to be moving, hopefully moving that forward too.
You're going to do what?
We're, we're hopefully going to be moving that forward. I think we're, we're working with GIS to make that happen. So anytime that there's an incident, that's not really ready for rollout right now. I'm in preliminary stages of having that, of what that can do. I know that T dot is currently using similar program so that it updates in real time, so. And then we also have, I also have somebody invited from T dot here to talk a little bit about any kind of what what their process is for an incident like this.
That would be helpful because, you know, in in wrecks all the time, we wind up with traffic coming down through our residential neighborhoods that that really just lock everything in. And if we can keep, you know, if if we could help if we could just keep that from happening during these wrecks.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And I do have a light from Councilman Leftford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. Let's talk old school signage. If you're in a tractor trailer, I know they work with GPSs and they're rerouting in the ways. I understand all that. But sometimes if you were to see something on the side of the road that said, do not exit eighteen wheeler, so many axles, whatever, railroad bridge ahead, you know, that, do we do that? Do we have a team? Do we have, working with C dot, T dot, and CPD, putting a car there? Something that says, you know, smaller vehicles can go this way, but do not go this way. I know that it's, I know that it's labor and it's, it's people power. But boy, this, this was bad. I I have a business on Broad Street. We just sat there all day. And and, you know, we watched the chicken truck try to go in there. I screamed, no, don't do it, don't do it. You know, and they did it. And it was horrible. But I I'm just trying to, I'm trying to go find solutions while we work with digital plans and all. I mean, that's great, and I see that, I see that as being probably years out. Old fashioned, boots on the ground, do we have an emergency response team? With CPD in conjunction with C dot and T dot can feel free to jump in here as well, that we could work together to put literal boots on the ground, cars at intersections, don't do this.
Yes, sir, I would think that is a possibility. I do believe that our partners with T dot, I'm not sure who's here from T dot, but I wouldn't mind hearing, you know, their, you know, your like policies, procedures when it comes to things like that. Because we're, you know, having signage up and being able to see it from a distance to prevent something like that happening. When it comes to a police car itself, you're having, you you just have to block the whole road and then get out and let one car at a time. Eventually, you're going to have a stack full of eighteen wheelers. That doesn't solve anything. I feel like that where this discussion needs to get bigger is what are the options? And who do we need to get into the room to figure out what those options are?
And and the second part of that question is, and no one's asked yet, but I have to. Do we know why the accident occurred?
Yes, there was a a car, a normal car, that unfortunately kind of cut into, curved into the lane and caused the eighteen wheeler to swerve. When the eighteen wheeler swerved, overcorrected, it flipped on its side.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Did you have anything that you could share with us relative to your, you know, policies, procedures when we have a wreck that extends into multiple jurisdictions?
I think you did a great job.
But we know, we know it's an organic situation. We know that it's chaotic, it's organic, and it just, it it just feels like at times, and this happens in East Brainerd too and everywhere, that would be helpful if we could, I mean, have some emergency type signage, direct people, don't do this. Railroad track, Graysville, for example, going over those railroad tracks in a, you know, an eighteen wheeler or something way out in advance. A lot of times we go from Broad Street and the riverfront, from Broad Street, and you want to turn left, and then you don't know that the rest of River, Riverfront Drive is blocked off until you get on top of it. Well, I would have never turned left. I would have just kept going if you, you know, backing up. I I'm just, I'm going for old fashioned muscle and boots on the ground to try to figure out if if that's effective. I mean.
I I think there's areas for that. I think identifying where those areas are. I know that with every one of the railroad trussels, even the one that the chicken truck hit, there's a sign right there in front of your face. You can't go through there without seeing it, and he did it anyway. You know, some of that stuff you just can't plan for. But I do feel like that having a a broader conversation of what that type of signage looks like and where it's deployed and potentially useful versus where it's not. A situation like this on twenty-four, I feel like that signage with trucks and big flashing signs and things of that nature would much, would be much more appropriate than than trying to put district officers out there. Because you're, you're also diving into Georgia and then well over into the next county.
And I will say this to end this. I see how effective our officers are at directing traffic, like at schools. For example, I see that every morning, and that thousand people can be ushered through a a school zone with the with the the magic of our CPD. And and it's effective because I've seen it without it, and then I saw it put into place. And boy, does it work. Does it work? Wonderful. I I saw putting a lot of faith in you all, so.
Yes, so they they do a fantastic job. They definitely do. This is definitely one of those situations where this is going to require a lot more than than just us here. This is something we need to look at from multi jurisdictional to see what can we do potentially to relieve this.
There's something we can do to help because you know how I, you know how I roll. I I'm here to help you. So if there's something we can do to help you, we're, we're on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Leftford, Chairman Henderson.
So gentlemen from T dot, you mind giving us your name and?
My name is Christopher Smith. I go by Chris, though.
Were you on site on the fourth?
No, sir, I was not on site.
No. So does T dot have a policy about when they open up both lanes or when they keep one lane closed? Or is this a game time decision?
So it, we do have an open roads policy. Our goal is to open the road up within ninety minutes. And I'll admit, it did not happen this time. But we do get that done more than ninety-five percent of the time. We get the roads opened back up. And that's from, our help department's great with that, stranded motorists, things like that. We get the roads opened back up working crashes. This does sound like it was a special case where there's not a lot of room. But we do trust our people on the ground to make the best, safest decision.
So and I'm just wondering, in a, in a situation like this that causes causes so much gridlock in a community, because there are certain times you you create a certain amount of of, I guess, danger or or whatever you might by by gridlock in a a community. We had kids at school that parents couldn't get to. We had individuals that couldn't get to doctor visits. We obviously had businesses shut down. But I mean, this became a real safety issue in the Lookout Valley community. And I just, you know, I'm wondering, you know, trying to weigh the 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 options between opening up both lanes and, you know, locking down a community if one benefit outweighs the other and how those decisions are made.
But it, it's made at the scene.
Okay.
If our folks think opening two lanes up is too dangerous, then then we won't do it. Because it's, you can create a a situation where you have a fatality of a worker, and then you really are going to have the road shut down for a long time.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, and that's what I, you know, wonder, wanting to know. Thank you, sir. Any other? I don't guess anybody else had a question?
All right. Uh, no, I didn't, I don't see any other lights.
Okay. All right. Chief, did you have any follow up? So if we're on questions, I do, I do have one question. So there, there seems to be, Mr. Smith, if if you want to go ahead and sit down.
Thank you.
There seemed to be some confusion initially at the scene about what to, you know, who to call, what should have been done. I I guess in reviewing this, have we learned, were there some things that we could improve on to help that situation as far as it looked like it maybe it was two hours from the time the wreck happened till we finally got the company, the wrecker company in rotation out there? Are our officers trained to know what to do when they roll up on a crash like this? So that they understand and, you know, and and I was just trying to learn a little bit of how about how this rotation works. And there's like four classes of wrecks out there. There seems to be, it cuts them, I guess it's like it's cumbersome as to, you know, do I need a Class A? Do I need a Class B? Do I need a Class C? Do I need a a recovery? Is there a way to streamline this so that when we roll up on the scene, there's not confusion as to what needs to happen? confusion as to what needs to happen next?
I actually brought a subject matter expert here that can answer that a lot better than I can. What I can tell you is, to the short answer of are they trained, yes, they are. Can it be complicated? Absolutely. It absolutely can. We have multiple lists based on the type of tow it is. If it's a regular car, then you have an owner's request or a district owner's request or a district police pickup. All three are different things, different categories, different criteria. And when you have a recovery versus a semi crash, or just a normal semi crash versus a recovery, again, two separate things. So it can get confusing, which is, you know, why the officer did do her due diligence to make sure that the right thing happens so that we weren't in violation of, of any, you know, any ordinance or anything like that. I will say though that the timing of it wasn't a few hours. It was only, you're only talking a few minutes from the time that, you know, Yates was notified versus, and, and arrived on scene and the time that Montego was notified and arrived on scene. There was not a two-hour gap there according to the body, warrant, camera timeline. It was, again, it was timed, so absolutely it was timed and could have been a little bit faster had that been worked out sooner. There was also confusion on the dispatcher's side where they were trying to get which rotation is it? Again, that, that part of it is because it is a bit complex. You have to really understand the details of what type of tow that you're talking about.
So who has the list for rotation?
Dispatch, Hamilton County Dispatch.
Dispatch ought to know who's on rotation then whenever a call's, a call comes in.
That's who we, that, that is who we rely on to manage that rotation. Again, I'll, I'll let, Sergeant Wood is here, he's, he's over our regulatory unit and can speak to the tow.
I've got some big shoes to fill, subject matter expert over here. So, yes, our ordinance can be very confusing when we start talking about Class C and recovery. I've worked with Councilwoman Dotley in the past on these and we learned a lot, I learned a lot. We've had a lot of stakeholders in the community that run these businesses come and educate us. There's a lot to learn about it, so. A Class C in a recovery, they tend to look like they're a big truck. They look like the same truck. A recovery, the only thing that's going to make a recovery class truck different is it's going to have a rotator. Think of like a, a crane, if you will. It can rotate, extend, lift, move. It's, it's a little bit more functional than your regular boom-style wrecker. The way our ordinance is written right now on the interstates, especially when you're talking about an overturned 18-wheeler, we are limited to those recovery class trucks. Our office sends a list out to dispatch every year and if there's any updates, we, we can update it. It's a living, breathing document, if you will. We can update it on the fly. They'll call us, "Hey, Sergeant Wood, I have a overturned 18-wheeler on 24. This is where it is. I show company ABC on call for rotation. Can we call them?" "Yes." They reach up to our office, they verify with us who's on call and that it is the correct class wrecker responding to that.
Okay, so a lot of things it seems like have to be determined in order to get the call for the right wrecker to come out.
Yes, sir, you could say that.
Is there a way to streamline that where there's not so much decision-making and process?
I think we would have to change the ordinance and maybe give definitions on these terms or even maybe just take away the recovery in C-class and just make it a heavy class wrecker.
Yeah.
That may make it a little bit more simplified, in my personal opinion.
Okay. All right, thank you. Chief, I, uh, let, let me just say this. So one, I appreciate you putting the, the screen up there about having an emergency response coordination in an event like this because this, this was a significant event.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this one was a little bit heavier than, than most, but, but anytime a wreck occurs from just about Russell Boulevard to the state line, it, it has Lookout Valley in a gridlock.
Yes, sir.
So I think between, maybe you looking at an emergency response coordination, us looking at time signals coming down Cummings Highway and Broad Street and then, I don't, I don't know if you ever really addressed the, the trucks having to turn on or, you know, the, having to make that right-hand turn. I don't know if that's something that, some, some improvements that we need to make to that intersection because trucks do get stuck under that bridge all the time.
Right.
Uh, I don't know if it's some, you know, something that we need to look at making improvements at that intersection, but, but certainly, you know, having to have traffic stopped on our, on our only escape route is, was certainly burdensome, so.
And I can, I can speak to that a little more. While that day, Sanofi wasn't the, the primary reason trucks were going that direction, the primary reason was because they were coming off of 24 onto Cummings Highway and then when they got to that intersection, they realized, most of them, realized they could not go under that underpass. So then they had no choice but to turn up. Sanofi does get deliveries though. They, we did reach out to them and actually met with them. They get deliveries there from semi trucks on, on a weekly basis. The only alternative route for them would be go all the way down to Russell Boulevard, down into Georgia, coming back up 193 to come in from that direction. Again, we would be rerouting 18-wheelers through neighborhoods, both in Georgia as well as our Chattanooga neighborhoods on the south side. I feel like that, and, and there's not going to be a solid route. So they could be turning down one street just fine, the next street has power lines that is not just fine. There's not a good way to reroute traffic. The only alternative to that intersection would be to rework the intersection itself to allow those 18-wheelers to be able to make that right-hand turn to go westbound.
Okay. Well, I certainly look forward to an action plan that you could, you know, present back to us on, on how to better handle this so that, that we can kind of help ease the burden of what a wreck creates in this community.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much. Councilman Leford.
Madam Chair, may I direct your question to the chairman?
Absolutely.
Did we, Chairman, add in a review of the ordinance?
We did not, but if that is something that, that it sounds like.
I would, I would love to streamline the, the, the system if, if possible. I see Mr. Anderson's already, probably has the language ready to go.
May I?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman, I've got a 30-page draft of a towing ordinance change sitting on my desk. It's not final yet. I've been meeting with the, some of the individual towing company owners and I just texted Sergeant Wood that that was a great idea and we should fold it into it. We're going to meet later this week about it.
Mr. Anderson's one step ahead. I like it. Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman Leford.